Afternoon, everyone. I call the April 5, 2020, closed session meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, would you be kind enough to read the instructions to the public on how to participate?
Thank you, Mayor. The public can attend this meeting in person or watch it on fullerton.legisstar.com or any of our government cable channels. If the public would like to make public comment, again, they can do that here in person or via Zoom at zoom.us/join or call 1-669-900-9128. The Zoom meeting ID is 978-4219-1797, and all the information and more is available on the agenda.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Jiang.
Present.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Councilmember Zara.
Here.
And Mayor Protem Whitaker.
Here.
And Councilmember Dunlap is not yet present.
Very good. If there's any public comments on any closed session items, we'll hear them now. Are there any commenters on Zoom? Well, then, we will recess to closed session. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any closed session reports this evening?
There's no report this evening.
Thank you. Do any council members have any ex parte communications to report? Seeing none, move on to presentations. We're going to take something a little out of order today. There's a gentleman that I want to welcome to do a presentation. Is Mr. Daniel Lee here? No? Maybe? No? I thought he was. So we'll move to the next presentation we have. We've got Donate Life Month. We're going to -- we've got a proclamation to present to Mr. Dave Holland of One Legacy Ambassador. Is Mr. Holland here? All right, very good. Do we have the presentation available? On behalf of Donate Life Month, we have a proclamation here from our city. On behalf of the City Council of Fullerton, I present this to you, sir.
All right.
Please, you will.
If I can.
Please speak.
Yeah, thank you. On behalf of Donate Life, I'd like to thank the mayor and the city for their longtime support and particularly recognize councilmembers Whitaker and Silva for their long participation. If I can share personally why donor registration is so important. I developed adult-onset juvenile diabetes in my 30s, which then caused my kidneys to fail in my 40s. In 2006, I received a pancreas from a deceased donor, a 16-year-old young lady who registered as a donor when she received her -- when she got her driver's license at the DMV. Since that point, for the last 16 years, I've been a former diabetic. Prior to that, on April 6, 2004, which will be 18 years ago tomorrow, I received a living donor kidney transplant. My living donor is my dear brother Mike, who, let me just put it this way, the word hero is totally inadequate. We encourage folks to consider registering as a donor, organ and tissue donor, when they get their driver's licenses or renewals at the DMV or can go to donatelifecalifornia.org. Again, we are very appreciative of the recognition and the support. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir, both of you. We have another proclamation this evening for Arbor Day. Is Director Cardenas here? Or Mr. Cardenas? See?
I'm going to have to speak at the mic a little bit after this proclamation, but Arbor Day really important to our city. I think there's an Arbor Day event at Adelina Park that I invite all of you to as well, and I'm sure Mr. Cardenas will be happy enough to give us details on that. Thank you, I serve. All right, very good.
Nice to meet the council and mayor. I haven't had too much of an opportunity to have direct interaction with all of you. I am Roger, the landscape supervisor for Public Works, and we invite you to Arbor Day. Arbor Day is very special to our Fullerton community. It's our 41st year celebrating Arbor Day. Adelina Park is receiving their first Arbor Day, so I'm really excited for that. April 16, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., we're going to have a lot of activities for the kiddos. We're going to be giving the kiddos some seedlings to take home, and it's just overall going to be an amazing event. We're going to have our partners, West Coast Arborists, providing some informational material as well as Southern California Edison as partners. Cal State University Fullerton will also be in attendance to provide some information about the school and the campus and their sustainability department. It's very big right now because of we want to promote greenery throughout the city and throughout other counties. So thank you so much. I appreciate you having us today, and I am happy to accept the proclamation. I hope all of you have a good day.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may quickly, just Mr. Cardenas, I want to thank you for all you've done during these last two years when we've been short-staffed, shorthanded, and I know I've sent emails where residents say, hey, when are you going to clean this up and so forth? And then you guys take it on. So thank you and keep up the good work and congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, one comment, too. I did want to note that this year in particular, these Arbor Days are important to try to replace trees that we've been losing throughout the droughts over the last many years. And this year, Fullerton's anniversary, 41 years now, is an official tree city, the city of Fullerton. So we pay a lot of attention to our urban forest. We appreciate all your efforts to keep everything healthy out there. Thanks.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to invite Councilman Zara to present with me the proclamation for Arab American Heritage Month.
City of Fullerton, thank you, guys, for declaring Arab American Heritage Month. For a story to tell, in 1909, there was an individual named George Shem from Beirut. He was a police officer in Venice, California, and he actually had to argue, go to the Superior Court of Los Angeles to argue the fact that for him to even arrest somebody, that he was wide enough to arrest somebody, you could say. And since then, we haven't had any Arab representative in the city council until Ahmazahra here, who was able to represent the Arab community. Took almost 100-something years, but here we are now, and the city of Fullerton has been the leader in all this. Fullerton has a wonderful school, Cal State -- Cal State University Fullerton. Sorry about that. Where many students there are of descent from the Middle East and North Africa. They're Muslim, and they're very active, one of the most prominent student organizations there. So Fullerton has been one of the most important cities for the Arab community. So thank you, guys, for this proclamation.
Salaam alaikum, peace be upon you. Thank you. First of all, we love the city of Fullerton, the Arab American community. We shop here, we worship here, we learn here, we take our kids, different institutions in the city of Fullerton, so it's a great honor to receive this proclamation celebrating Arab American Heritage Month. Thank you to our beloved councilmember Ahmed Zahra, who is the first Arab American, as far as we're concerned, representing us here, and all of you for voting for this. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. April is also Sexual Assault Awareness Month. The city of Fullerton has a proclamation that we will announce this evening on Sexual Awareness Month. Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts millions of adults, teenagers, and children. The goal of Sexual Assault Awareness Month is to raise public awareness about sexual violence, educate communities on how to prevent it. We want to make sure that we, as a city, pay attention to this and recognize the kind of concern this is amongst our community and do all the things that we can to mitigate it. So again, on behalf of Sexual Assault Awareness Month, I read this proclamation as we move forward together. That said, next is public comments. If we have public comments that folks that wish to make a public comment, please line up and do so, and we'll take comments in chambers first before we go to Zoom. Mr. Harris.
My name is Todd Harrison, and I'm one of the endangered residents of the Rancho La Paz mobile home park. Hello again, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. There's been a lot of justified fuss about redistricting mess here in Fullerton, but that debacle of gerrymandering is not what I'm here to talk about. You can play all the games you like trying to ensure districts that will keep you in office, but you're doomed to fail if you do not do the right thing for your voters. Despite Fullerton having a population, per the 2020 census, of over 143,000, there have been many elections decided by very small margins. Senior citizens and those with low income are two categories with a lot of overlap. Over 13% of Fullerton residents are over 65. Nearly half of them are, to put it bluntly, poor. 18.8% of Fullerton residents are living in poverty. Age and poverty cross demographic lines, so it does not matter what district we live in, and none of you are safe from our wrath at the polls. It's still not too late for you to take real action before the next election, to stand up and be known for caring about those of us in these statistics, we actual humans in distress. Some of you on this board now were there when the seniors of Rancho La Paz first came to you for help. You looked at us, at the predator about to actually kill some of us, and chose to do little, nothing effective. Since then, a number of us have been rendered homeless, had our retirement funds destroyed, and yes, some have died. This happened in part because the Fullerton City Council had a chance to act and, for the most part, turned its back on us. This council has a chance for a redo, a chance at redemption, a chance to show they give a damn about seniors and those struggling to make ends meet every month. Consider again a city ordinance to prevent predatory rent gouging, such as by Mr. Saunders, from destroying us. The state acted narrowly to help the residents of Rancho La Paz, but as that even is only one of six mobile home parks in Fullerton. Even the assurance of those other park owners are sincere. There is so much money on the table, someone will grab for it, and another community of affordable rents will be sold and destroyed. So close below us on the map is Santa Ana, well-known for dirty politics, and yet they were able to implement controls on predatory renting. It's time for Fullerton to do the same. This is not just about me or the residents of Rancho La Paz, but about every threatened citizen of Fullerton. I'm only the noisy tip of the iceberg, speaking for many of this endangered species. Some of us will live long enough to vote, so think carefully and choose to act visibly and decisively on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one, please. Ms. Milton.
Coming to you to request the fact that June is right around the corner and November is close by. I'm, as we did last year, I'm requesting that we have our city council meeting the day after Election Day, because as it has been for several years, the elections seem to be getting hotter and hotter, and the people that are running need to use that last day to get out and get their constituents and do their stomping to make sure that everyone gets out and gets to the polls to vote, because it is the second most important day of your life. And if without voting, we don't have a country. So I'm requesting that we hold off our city council to -- so that the greater good can take a little bit of a priority, just for one day, perhaps. I hope this can be, because it worked out fine last year, and we need everyone to help keep this country going. I thank you so very much. And the other thing, on the consent calendar number two, never, ever, ever let number two die, because it's with 10 meetings a month, it keeps me allowed when I can't get here, because it can cost up to $100 a month to get here to meetings, and oftentimes, I can't, I don't have the strength. So please, I think that's a wonderful thing, and I thank you so very much for listening to me this evening. Take care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Curtis Gamble, activist for the homeless and veterans. Our proposal and goals are that the American Rescue Act plan funding $32 million be used to assist the Fullerton homeless, veterans, and with housing, shelter, OCTA/OC bus services, and OCTA/OC sheriff department services starting tonight. Many of the Fullerton homeless and veterans would like, would love to be able to use a cash app, Visa card, or prepaid Visa debit card to receive direct funding from the ARPA funding. The homeless and the veterans would also like to thank city council for sharing the American Rescue Act funding with Elimination Foundation on behalf of the Fullerton homeless community. The Elimination Foundation has received, on behalf of the Fullerton homeless, $1,275,000 for shelter beds for 30 of the Fullerton homeless residents at $40 a bed for six months of funding from the American Rescue Act, American Rescue Act plan. However, in Fullerton, the 2019 time and point count shows that Fullerton has 308 homeless people living on the streets. Now, we are in April, and once again, the homeless and veterans have no place to call home. The city of Fullerton and Elimination Foundation could form a partnership with Mary's Kitchen in the city of Orange to better serve our homeless and veterans 24 hours, 7 days a week, 365 days a year via the city of Orange Municipal Coats Navigation Centers and Emergency Shelters. Mary's Kitchen via the American Rescue Act plan funding $1,275,000 for shelter/hotel beds should, could assist the homeless community by providing emergency housing vouchers to assist those who are experiencing homelessness, at risk of being homeless. Recently homeless are fleeing, are attempting to flee domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, or human trafficking. Recently homeless prevented homelessness and housing instability. The Fullerton homeless, the Fullerton homeless and veterans would like to have a cash app, Visa card, or debit card for options to have shelter beds via Fullerton Navigation Center, hotel and motel beds, tiny home beds, accessory dwelling bed, tough shed beds, shipping container homes beds, RV beds, and safe parking program beds/spaces. Thank you very much.
Next public comment. Seeing none in chambers, we'll move on to Zoom.
We have one hand raised in Zoom.
Please.
And it would be the Good Hands for One co-president. You should be able to unmute.
Hello, Fullerton City Council members and Mayor Jiang. First and foremost, I apologize as I was mistaken and I was under the impression that I would be speaking online during the public comment sections today. With that being said, hello, my name is Daniel Lee, and I'm currently serving as one of the presidents of Good Hands for One, and I believe my co-president Lauren Pack is also currently in the meeting, and she plans to be speaking online afterwards, too. But I'd like to introduce ourselves, and we are so honored to be given the opportunity to introduce ourselves as an organization and just what we have done up to this point and how we plan on expanding our organization in the future to the Fullerton City Council. So I'll be first starting off with what Good Hands for One has done over the past few years. Created in early 2013, Good Hands for One is a nonprofit organization consisting of eager high school volunteers who are dedicated to providing equal learning opportunities to the underprivileged youth of Fullerton. Up until the coronavirus pandemic, we have been providing free tutoring services in mathematics to students from Title I elementary schools for the past nine years at the Fullerton Public Library. Thanks to the support of the Fullerton Public Library, we were able to see the growth and development of hundreds of younger children, not only within math, but also as members of this community. We are also able to extend our program by providing tutoring services for English during the summer on various weekdays. Today, we have over 16 tutors who dedicate their time every Saturday morning, as well as over 40 students who seek assistance in mathematics. We have proudly served over 100 students during the course of the past nine years, and we would like to thank the Fullerton City Council, Fullerton Public Library, as well as the Fullerton community for supporting us and fulfilling our vision. Now, if possible, I would like to hand it off to Lauren Pack, who is currently in the Zoom meeting.
Madam City Clerk, can we accommodate that request?
Lauren Pack, you should be able to unmute.
Hello, thank you. Like Daniel said, my name is Lauren Pack, and I'm also serving as a co-president of Good Hands for One. So continuing off of what Daniel was saying, despite the past few years of the pandemic, Good Hands for One has continually engaged in devising other ways to help our students while following social distancing guidelines, which restricted us from holding in-person tutoring sessions at our local library. However, in 2021, we held a successful year of tutoring mathematics online through Zoom, as well as an English camp that we held throughout the summer, and we are currently continuing to hold our tutoring sessions through Zoom. Although distance learning may be different from meeting our students in person, even in a virtual environment, our volunteers always strive to help our students learn and feel inspired through our utmost support and guidance. So moving forward by the end of the year, our organization hopes to either begin hybrid tutoring sessions or resume our in-person tutoring, and we also plan on reaching out to new library branches and expanding Good Hands for One's availability for more youth and children from low-income families in Title I schools within our local community. And this is why we wanted to introduce Good Hands for One, and it has been such an honor to introduce our organization to the Fullerton City Council. Thank you so much for your time. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Now, I want to express to the public that Mr. Daniel Lee and Ms. Lauren Pack, these are high school students that are making a difference in their community. These are local high school students in Fullerton that are working hard to make sure that those in need have a service that they require. So I thank them very much for all of their hard work, all the tutors that do all of this great work, I think should all be recognized. I look very forward to the time when we can do that in person. So thank you both very, very much. As we move on, I did want to take a moment before we get to staff and city council reports that item number 15 will be continued. So if anybody's here for item number 15 on the regular agenda, please know that it's being continued.
Mayor, I'll note that you have a 6:00 p.m. public hearing scheduled for this evening, so when you're ready to jump to that item, it does need to be time-specific.
Thank you. That said, we will move on to council reports. We'll start off with Councilman Dunlap. Sir, do you have anything to report?
Nothing to report, sir.
Very well, sir. Councilman Zara.
Nothing, just wishing everybody and our Muslim community a Happy Ramadan.
Thank you, sir. Happy Ramadan, indeed. And Mr. Mayor Protem.
No report this evening.
And as he's coming through the door right now, Councilman Silva, any, anything to report, sir?
Just want to thank some of the viewers and residents out there who have, who I guess had some sympathy for me from the redistricting process, and thank you for the kind emails and words, and, you know, we'll look forward to coming back in 2024. And again, as we're moving out of the pandemic, I want to again thank the staff and everyone for pushing us through this situation, and it was mentioned that we are getting a new general manager, so I do want to take the time right now, and I'll do it also next time, to thank our current acting city manager or interim city manager for helping and guiding us, and then everyone who's been an interim here. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. A few words this evening about our ongoing drought and our response to it. The snowpack levels were at historical lows last year. Unfortunately, this year, it's even lower. This has triggered our governor to begin conservation conversations again, as the news signals a worsening drought and potentially catastrophic wildfire season ahead. As we continue to try and navigate this historical drought, I'm asking all Fullerton residents during the month of April to take the conservation pledge at mywaterpledge.com. By doing so, you are committing to use water more efficiently, reducing pollution, and saving energy, because while we cannot control snowpack levels in the Sierra Nevadas, we can control our demand management as a result. Simple things can proactively help, watering your lawn only two days a week, doing laundry at load capacity. We should try and reimagine our addiction to perfectly green manicured static turf. So again, I ask all Fullertonians to join me, take the conservation pledge at mywaterpledge.com. It is free and easy. You can win hundreds of prizes, including $3,000 for utility payments. You can even help a local charity win a 2022 Toyota Highlander Hybrid. Together, we can make a real difference, so please join me, Fullerton, and take the pledge today. Lastly, our city manager mentioned the importance of making our own good news to me during a meeting that we had. Our city council recently passed water bill relief for our most vulnerable residents. Mr. Harrison here is an advocate for them. We did that to make sure that the water bills that they were incurring did not impact their life negatively. That's a progressive action no other Orange County city has taken, not Santa Ana, not Anaheim. Yet there's no news of such real-world tangible assistance to those in need in our community. Yet there's no news of such real-world tangible assistance to those in need in our community from our local media partners, which makes me wonder, is this a partnership at all? When what is reported is only the compounded negative and rarely, if ever, the positive highlighted? Something to consider, I suppose. So I welcome the good news to get out to our community. It's important that they recognize that this council hears them. So I applaud our council for making that decision. We're one of the only to do that so far and hopefully that continues on and we become the, the light that Orange County follows. We have an appointment this evening. Councilman Zara, are you ready to make that appointment, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to appoint Mr. Mayhul Desai. Thank you. This is for the active transportation committee to fill the vacant position.
Thank you, sir. We can take public comments on this matter. Is anybody here to comment on this item?
We have no public comments.
Very well. And we'll ask for a motion to ratify Councilman Zara's appointment. I'll do that. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Very well. Madam City Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Whitaker.
Aye.
And Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
So next item on our agenda is the consent calendar.
I'll move the consent items.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second. Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to pull actually item number three, just to have a public discussion on this because I've had a lot of questions.
Very well.
Asked on that.
All right. Councilmember Zara's pulled item number three. So if I, if someone would move the balance, that would be welcome.
You do a motion in second.
I'll second.
Madam City Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Whitaker.
Aye.
Mayor Jung.
Aye. And Councilman Zara, if it's all right with you, we'll return to item number three at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, no problem.
Very well, sir. We do have a public hearing item at 6:00 PM. That is the redistricting of Fullerton, second reading of the ordinance and disbanding the redistricting advisory committee. Is there a PowerPoint? No PowerPoint.
No presentation, but I'd like our interpreters, if you'd indulge us, to come make their usual announcements.
Please, I welcome our interpreters to do that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Jennifer Santiago, Spanish interpreter, and my colleague Jose Sanchez is with us and will be providing simultaneous interpreting and also consecutive as needed. Somos intérpretes en español, Jennifer y mi colega Jose. Y vamos a aprender interpretación si necesitan dispositivo, puede ir a la oficina a mano saliendo del edificio a mano izquierda. Gracias.
Mayor Jung, council members. My name is Bao Lu, certified court interpreter in the Vietnamese language. I'm here to provide interpreting services. Kính thưa quý vị, tôi tên là Lu Ngọc Bảo. Tôi ở đây sẽ giúp cho quý vị thông dịch buổi họp ngày hôm nay. Quý vị cần những cái dụng cụ, xin làm ơn qua bên phòng của thư ký để xin họ lấy. Tôi sẽ giúp cho quý vị. Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Helen. I'm the Mandarin interpreter.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm a Korean interpreter. Anh nghe hả xem nha? 오늘 이 공청회에는 동시 통역이 제공됩니다. 동시 통역이 필요하신 분은 이 옆방의 시리 매니저 방에 가시면 헤드셋을 받으시고 한국어로 동시 통역을 들으실 수 있습니다. 감사합니다. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing. We'll now hear public comments on this item. If any members of the public wish to comment on this item, please come forward. Seeing none in chambers, or do we have any on Zoom?
And we have no hands raised in Zoom.
Very well, we'll bring this back to council. I will close the public hearing and seek a motion from council accordingly.
I'd move the item.
Is there a second? I'll provide that. Madam City Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Uh, no.
Councilmember Zara.
No.
Mayor Protam Whitaker.
Aye.
And Mayor Jung.
Aye.
And passes three to two.
Thank you.
Will you read the title into the record, please?
We can read it. We read it at the last meeting also, but we'll do it one more time. It's ordinance number 3312, an ordinance of the city council, the City of Fullerton, California, adopting a voting district map.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're on to regular business. Again, those that were not here in chambers or those of our public that were tuning in on Zoom, for item number 15, it has been continued again. That said, we'll move on to regular scheduled business. Item number 12, it's the 2022-23 road maintenance and rehab account funds allocation. Engineer Grantham.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Back to talk about streets again, but in a good way today, hopefully. Okay, so this is my annual presentation to council and the public for allocation of our SB1 funds. Next slide, please. So a little background for the public. SB1 has been around since 2017. Most people know it as the new gas tax, even though it's probably middle-aged at this point. We have been using those funds since 2018 and next year we do expect to get a little under $3.2 million. The intent of SB1, excuse me, is similar to the regular gas tax and Measure M2 that we get, is to help local agencies address the basic road maintenance and conditions of our streets. Next slide. So just to highlight what we've done since 2018, I think what I want to point out here is that we've tried to be as equitable as possible throughout the city when we program this. You kind of notice we're going in a clockwise direction, kind of started out on Chapman Avenue near the southeast and moving all the way around. We've got three projects that will be coming this, this fiscal year, basically. 4A is starting in the next couple of weeks. 5A, which is the second half of Euclid, Rosecrans, 5A will be starting hopefully in the next month or so. And then 5B, which is Valencia, won't happen till the summer because we want to avoid conflicts with Valencia Elementary. Next slide. So to receive SB1 funds, there are certain requirements that we have to make. One of these is this public presentation, which is why I do this every year. We also take this plan to interact on Infrastructure Natural Resources Advisory Committee and we discuss potential street segments and they, we provide recommendations and they have unanimously agreed with the recommendations that I am proposing tonight. We do have to do, also do a public hearing. Like I said, that's one of the reasons why we're here. Thanks. So the recommended projects, two of them next year. As I said, we're kind of making our way around in a clockwise direction, so I'm kind of back on the east side. So northeast, it'll be Associated Road, Rolling Hills to Imperial. And then southeast is Orange Thorpe, State College, Two Plus Centia. And I will talk about that a little more in detail. Next slide, please. So the first project, Associated, we're actually going to combine this as we try to do with all our street projects with a water main replacement. So that has been programmed for next year for the water main replacement. Also, there's going to be a little bit of sewer repair, which we'll also coordinate. It's about half a mile and the work, surprisingly, is just a grind and overlay from the recommendations we received. So the cost is about 1.1 million. That estimate was done prior to all the gas prices going up. So hopefully the gas prices will come down and we can stay around 1.1 million.
David, if I may, just interject real quick. When you say next year, are you talking fiscal year?
Fiscal year.
Yeah, so that is this year, this calendar year, just for.
We hope to start construction this calendar year.
Okay.
But when funding kicks in in July, we got to go through the process.
Got, got it.
And of course, don't really want to build in wet weather. All right. Project two, Orange Thorpe Avenue. This has been a bono contention for a lot of people for a long time. And the reason I haven't brought this forward was because the City of Placentia is actually building a brand-new sewer down State College, excuse me, down Orange Thorpe from State College to Placentia, then up Placentia in their city. That project was, has been delayed a number of years due to funding issues from the city. They are now moving forward on that project. They're in construction. So now that that project will be done, I decided this was a good time to do this street segment. Also, I thought it was a good time because the Goodman Development will be finishing soon and we'll have a lot of trucks driving along Orange Thorpe. So with a street that's already damaged, didn't want to damage it even more. A portion of Orange Thorpe, the south side, about 20 feet or so, is actually in the City of Anaheim. I've already contacted the City of Anaheim. They have already verbally agreed that they are willing to partner with us on a, on a project. They will pay for their share of improvements within their right-of-way. The City of Fullerton will be the lead. They will just essentially be paying their costs. We do want to point out, we have a section of sewer we'll replace, but we are not replacing the water main. We do not have money to do the water main. So there is a risk associated with that.
And, and just real quick, that water main, how, have we had any trouble with it or how, and how old is it? I mean.
It is old. It is a 12-inch cast iron water main. We haven't had a lot of recent issues with it. But I've learned to never say never and I'm not going to guarantee anything. One of the reasons, I've, I had a lot of back and forth with Meg on this. We don't like this situation by any stretch of the imagination, but, and this street work will be a complete reconstruction because of the trucks. But the way I was looking at this, if we do have a main break, if, and, and when we go back to actually do the replacement, because we've done a full, complete reconstruction, when we do the trenching, we can come back and just do a grind and overlay that will handle the trench repair and make it come back to essentially a brand-new condition. So it's not a perfect, it's not perfect at all. I'm not going to stand here and tell you it's the best approach. We're just taking a, an approach we think will be okay.
And you're not doing the water main because it's too costly or done enough funds or?
Don't have enough funds with all the other priorities. So with that, the recommendation is to adopt listing Associated Road in Orange Thorpe for pavement rehab using SB1 funds for the next fiscal year. And I'll take any questions.
Any questions from council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Councilman Zara.
I have a couple follow-up questions. Does this, using our SB1 money for this, does this deplete that fund?
I, I use, but I plan to use 100% of the funds every single year.
Yeah. And the other question, I had some, obviously, a lot of our roads need repair, but was there any consideration for the east part of Commonwealth? I know we did sort of a middle section, but there's another.
From State College as it loops around the Chapman?
Well, actually, from where, where we ended at the.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, that was programmed a few years ago, but we couldn't do the water main replacement all the way to Acacia. So we, we, we cut the limits of the street work. It is, it is a bit of a, what do we do every year? What makes sense? Where can we go? I, I could pick from 10 to 12 ulterior streets every year. And we, we work with water, we work with sewer to come up what we think is the better approach for that year. And I think that, and I think we picked Orange Thorpe for that reason.
And one final question, if I may. I know that you have, we, we did allocate about 10.
13.1.
13.1 million. Yeah, thank you. When do you think that we can start programming for that?
We are actually opening bids this week in the Marion area that will use ARPA funds for the street work. We're going to bid, hopefully within the next month, a preservation-type project on, in the southwest of the city using ARPA funds. And then next year, I am in the process of figuring out which streets, and it's going to be mostly residential streets. Be following the water and sewer work, they'll be using ARPA funds and Measure M2 funds. But I also plan to hopefully do Brookhurst at the 91 because there's no water main there. But we can hopefully do that, that segment of street as well.
All right, thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions from council?
Yeah, question.
Councilman Dunlap.
Any conversation with OCTA with respect to funds they could match or contribute to this project?
No, OCTA, they, we've had many conversations with them over the past year or so. Their comment is, we provide you M2. So there you go. They did though, and a couple of months ago, I brought to you the additional funds that became available from the feds, the $409,000. So they provided that and, you know, allocations based on population to every city in the county. And so council decided to use that on Associated from Yobalinda to Bassetturey.
Sure. Okay, I know and I guess in the past, I think there's been some discussions with OCTA specifically about Orange Thorpe in this area. And so that's where I wasn't sure if there was.
We talked to OCTA, we've also talked to the county of Orange. And we did submit every, we submitted to that, they, they put out a request a few months back for any projects that has a nexus to county facilities that they would look at and see if they want to put it in their seven-year CIP. So we put Orange Thorpe, we put Bassetturey, we put some other roads with, using the argument that, okay, it's not county right-of-way, but it services the ability for people to travel through the county. We haven't heard back from them. I'll be honest, I don't have my hopes high on that, but if you don't try, you don't get. So we, we threw everything at the wall to see what will happen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members with comments? Mr. Mayor Protam, anything, sir? All right, then we'll hear public comments on this item. Any members of the public wishing to comment? Seeing none in chambers, do we have any on Zoom?
We have two hands raised in Zoom.
Please.
Jane Ranz, she should be able to unmute. Jane Ranz?
Let's come back to Ms. Ranz. Who's next on the Zoom call list?
Next would be Jane Reifer. Soon as the pop-up gets out of the way of this window, I will be able to unmute you. There we go. Jane Reifer.
Oh, thank you very much for getting me in. I was really impressed way back when, when the Goodman.
Jane Reifer, can you try that again? There we are.
From when was I cut?
Pretty close to beginning. Why don't you go ahead and start at the top?
All right, thank you much. So I remember when the Goodman Logistics Project was first being discussed, I really appreciated the lead that Councilmember Silva took in asking what the street impacts would be from the Goodman Project, since it was a logistics organization and would be putting lots of trucks on the road. I remember he was told that they were only going to be helping out with streets, you know, contiguous to the project. And I'm wondering if there can be some discussion of why a further radius of mileage was not considered in the environmental documents for impact. We've just heard very clearly that this, that the truck traffic is going to be impacting our roads. And I just wonder why this was not studied during the, during the environmental process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Should we return back to Ms. Ranz?
Let's try Jane Ranz one more time. Jane Ranz, you should be able to unmute.
All right, we'll move forward. Bring this back to council. Mr. Gamble, you have a comment, sir?
Yes, Curtis Gamble, activist for the homeless. I just want to share, share this. I think that, my opinion, is that when we do the roads, we should do them correctly. I'm a former OCTA bus driver of 14 years, worked on, worked on Orange Thorpe and State College. And because of the, the buses that, that operate on the streets and, and the trucks that we're going to have, it's going to really inconvenience the, the bus drivers when we do any type of construction. That's, that's really major. So we want to do it right. I think that somehow we should find the funding, no matter what, because it costs more to not do it right than just to go along with this. So I just want to share that with you. It's very important to do it right the first time. It's cheaper to do it right the first time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll give it a go one more time. Ms. Ranz, is she available on Zoom?
Jane Ranz, let's see if we can unmute you one more time. Looks like she's disconnected.
Okay, very well, we'll bring this back to council.
I'll move the item.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Very well. Madam City Clerk, be kind enough to call the roll.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Whitaker.
Hi.
And Mayor Jung.
Hi.
Passes unanimously.
Very well. Next on the agenda is Maple and Gilbert Neighborhood Centers lease agreement. We have Director Alice Loyah here to make the presentation. Director Loyah, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I have a PowerPoint presentation. So this item was continued from the last council meeting to discuss the neighborhood center leases at Gilbert and Maple. Next slide, please. So in two thousand twenty-one, the city issued an RFP to look for qualified agencies that provide neighborhood services programs, nonprofits, using our facilities because the city had closed the neighborhood centers due to lack of funding. And we wanted to continue to provide neighborhood services, but with a nonprofit agency. And this would save the money for not having to have staff there, for not paying for the building cost, things like that. But to continue to provide neighborhood services to the, to the area. Next slide, please. So we had two commissioners, some staff in the Fullerton School District representative and a consultant review the proposals they came in. We had about six. Once we reviewed the first six, the six proposals, we took the top scoring proposals. And not every, not everyone submitted a proposal for every building. Some buildings didn't receive any proposals. But we took the top scores and we did an extensive hour and a half interview with them to find, to make sure that they were in alignment with what we were looking for to continue to provide these types of valuable services to the community. So after a couple had dropped out, we ended up with our final selection of two very good nonprofit agencies. OC United, who is interested in leasing the Gilbert Neighborhood Center, and Friendly Center, who is interested in leasing the Maple Neighborhood Center. Next slide, please. The terms of both leases are the same. The lessor is supposed to provide neighborhoods and social services programs as, as we discussed. It's a five-year term with two options for five-year extensions, which will total fifteen years. But at any time, we can terminate their lease for cause or without cause with ninety days' written notice. The tenants or lessors will provide building maintenance, custodial, telephone, internet, anything like that that they would need. We would continue to take care of major capital problems or capital improvements for the building. If they, the, these are just for the building. So if the tenants want to use any of the parks, they would need to obtain a park permit, like as anybody who would want to use a section of the park. The savings from these, from leasing out these neighborhood centers would be eighty-two thousand dollars in building cost. And it would save us a hundred and sixty-four thousand if we were to go back and provide services in these buildings with city staff. So I have tonight, so if you want to move to the next one, OC United and the Friendly Center here. That what, they can talk about their programs. I think they can do a better job than I can to discuss what kinds of programs they were going to be offering. So first, we have Jay Williams from OC United. And Jay, if you'd like to, oh, there's no Jay. Amy.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just got a question from his.
Counselor Silver, please.
On, on, if you go to the previous slide, just for clarity, you said it would cost the city a hundred and sixty-four thousand if we do, if we were to reopen it and provide services.
Right. Not including the eighty-two thousand. So you did add to it.
Yeah, that, and that's basically just daily maintenance, right? It's because we're responsible for the whole capital improvements. So day-to-day maintenance.
The eighty-two thousand would be just general maintenance and repairs on the inside and custodial.
Custodial, yeah. So, so just because I, I had asked for this in the last meeting, and I think we're going to bring it back during the budget session. But given that, you know, I've always advocated to have these centers open. But if a hundred and sixty-four thousand, we would be able to meet the same type of services these two vendors are going to provide.
I mean, they probably provide more. They have much more extensive programs than we had there.
Right.
And we had been limping along for a number of years. And we wanted to make sure that the neighborhoods would continue to have these very valuable programs in their area, which we were not able to do. We don't have, we never had employees that were social service workers. So we did provide recreation. We provided referral. We provided a lot of programs, but not to the extent that these two providers could provide. So yes, with the, an extra hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars on top of the eighty-two, we could open those two, those two facilities only, because other facilities that are closed would have additional cost and run programs, but not to the extent that the two providers that we chose would. So hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll invite someone from OC United to.
Yes. Looks like Amy Gau is here.
Book report on all your good work.
Do you want them to come over there?
Wherever they'd like.
Okay.
Please.
Terrific. Thank you so much, Mayor and council. We are so appreciative of the opportunity to serve out of the Gilbert Community Center. We've been invested in that community for several years. It's one that we care deeply about. As you can tell, some of the residents are here with us. And so I've asked Caleb Parker, who's going to be running our teen programming out of the community center to highlight those efforts. We have one of our teens who wanted to speak on behalf of the teens that will be receiving programming as well. And then I've asked Gabby Garcia to share about all the services that we'll be providing to the parents and families. So Caleb, do you want?
So we'll, we'll ask Caleb to come up and then all the parents and the teens, we'll, we'll get them at public comment, if that's all right. Very well. Caleb, please.
Hi, my name is Caleb. As Amy said, I'm the program director for our kids and teens programs in our, in OC United. And our United Teens Program, we have a bunch of them here who are part of our program here to share that they want this community center and what this place means to them. Our United Teens Program is a trauma-informed after-school program and mentorship program focused on social emotional learning. We work with seventh through twelfth graders in the neighborhood in both Valencia Park and the Orange Thorpe neighborhoods that are funnel, that we have connected through, through the elementary schools. So it's an extension of our first through sixth grade program that we already have been running for about six, seven years in Valencia Park Elementary with that same approach of trauma-informed and social emotional learning. So the teen program is just one piece of the programming that we have planned for the Gilbert Community Center, but is focused on helping teens in the neighborhood regain a sense of power, discover a sense of purpose in their life, and to find a sense of belonging. So everything that we're doing with our teens comes back to power, purpose, and belonging. The ways that we've done that, some of it is by them showing up to city council as they did last time. Them painting a mural, them having conversations about abuse and having conversations about boundaries. And one that they've been working on recently is coming up with an action plan of how they want to change their community through their own voice of what they feel is an issue, what they feel are major issues in their neighborhood, so that they can come back and begin to advocate for those things to change, as has been modeled by their moms in the neighborhood for the last seven years. So more than anything, as you'll hear from Ashley later on, they've developed a sense of family in this program. A lot of our kids come from a wide variety of experiences with family, but this has been a place for them to heal those experiences and to discover what healthy connection can be with their peers and with other adults. So this is just one piece of a larger goal of community transformation as we're working with kids and families from preschool all the way through grandparents. Thank you.
That's terrific. Thank you. Director Loyah, would you be kind enough to continue your presentation before we go to public comment?
Next slide, please.
Thank you.
Then I want to invite up Kathy Skeeling from the Friendly Center, who we would like to contract to run the Maple, Maple Neighborhood Center. Thank you, Kathy.
Good evening, Mayor and council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I'm very excited to share about Friendly Center with you, and we felt so fortunate to be able to propose a bid for the Maple Neighborhood Center and bring our services to this community. Friendly Center, just a little bit of history. We've been in the city of Orange since nineteen ninety-eight as a community resource center. And that is the same style of what we would bring to the community of Fullerton and the Maple neighborhoods area. And so the current buzzword is a family resource center. You might have heard that. They've kind of gone from community centers to family resource centers. But basically, we look holistically at a family, families who are in poverty, short-term crisis, in an emergency, and we're there for them, as well as having supportive services. We know that a family can go through crisis and they can get involved in our case management program where they sit down and with the case manager, they develop a program to connect them to services that they need and work with the family and walk them through the process. It might be connecting with a school to advocate for their child. They might be a victim of domestic violence, and it's helping connect them to services. And a wide variety of things, almost anything you could possibly imagine has, has been situations that have come to us. The thing about Friendly Center is that we just have a passionate staff and we listen to the community. For instance, in Orange, which I do mention Orange because we have a full program in Orange, and that is what we would plan to bring to Fullerton, all of our services. So we have case management, as I mentioned, and the supportive services. And then we do an education portion. We do parenting classes. We have financial literacy health classes, job development program. We have all those things. And the reason we have a lot of our programs is because we listen to the community and find out what they need. We organize groups that we call them in community engagement councils. And they come to us and we sit and we listen and we hear what they need for their family. We're not prescriptive because we know that people who need help are only going to, you know, receive the help that they're willing to get. So Friendly Center is very nimble and can really look into the community and provide the services that are needed. We have an after-school academic tutoring program where we focus on academics and also STEAM activities. And also, we have different food programs. We do offer emergency food for clients in crisis. And then we have regularly scheduled food distributions depending on the need of the community. And those type of food distributions, basically, we can serve, you know, if there's two hundred families, we can serve them in two hours. And it's done, cleaned up, and gone. It's, it's not a real long drawn-out thing. And in those situations, families are getting forty to fifty pounds of food at a time. So when we do a lot of our services, we want to make sure that we're not causing the families to keep coming back to us. We, we want to be able to give them the tools to then move forward and take care of themselves. So that's kind of in a nutshell. We do partner with other agencies. We have a lot of services under our own roof. Because also with this family resource center model, it's kind of like going to the mall. There's all the different stores at the mall. You might get your eyes checked. You might, you know, you might be able to get food. You might get clothes. So the idea is what the county has found too, is that family resource centers, where families can come to a one-stop shop and get services, they're more likely to do better and learn how to help themselves as they move forward. Our vision is to end generational poverty, and the way we do that is not with a hand up. I mean, not with a hand out, but with a hand up in order for them to have the tools to move forward. So I'd be pleased to answer any questions, or not, that now is not the time.
Now is the time. I'd be happy to answer any questions. We also have Amy and Kathy. They can also answer questions about their, their programs.
Councilman Zara, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I do have some questions. I, I'm very familiar with OC United and I've participated in some of the programs and even had Thanksgiving. So, so, but for Friendly Center, you are in you, in our community. I believe you were in Placentia.
We've been in a number of cities, you know, for different periods of time, yes.
So wel, welcome. We're, we're, we, we thank you for considering us. The, the questions I have are, and I know that I had some questions and they were sort of addressed by, and, and concerns, they were addressed by our staff through the contract, so I won't get into those, you know, usage of, of the park, et cetera. My question is, how many resident, Fullerton residents do you expect to, to serve? And will you be serving outside residents as well?
With our different funding sources, we, we cannot restrict ourselves just to the city of Fullerton. So obviously, city of Fullerton residents would get priority. But for instance, with the service going on, it, whoever comes. But what you, we find is that families don't travel all that far for services. Although I do have to tell you, during COVID, we had ten percent of our emergency services clients were coming from that, the area right here in Fullerton. So we were really surprised because we do keep track. We do registration forms and we cap, you know, keep track of our data. So I know that when families are in dire need, they will go farther for services. But the, the best model is to provide them as close to their home as possible.
Right. Because, and the reason I ask this, because obviously, this is, the lease is only for one dollar a year. So, so the Fullerton residents, Fullerton taxpayers who built this community center will be subsidizing this.
Well, actually, we feel we, as we wrote it in our executive summary, we're bringing three hundred thousand dollars worth of services to the community on an annual basis. When you look at everything that is brought into the community, that is, that is the value of a family resource center.
Right. And that, that's why I asked how many Fullerton residents will be served with that amount of services. But would you be able to, you know, come, you know, six months or, or a year from now, come back with, with more accurate statistics as far as how many Fullerton residents were served?
We'd be more than happy to do that. We have all that data. So yes, that is not a problem whatsoever. And our service is usually spread by word of mouth. We, we obviously work with police departments. We work with schools. And then also word of mouth between the different, you know, people who have received services. That's sort of how, you know, our services are spread and people who need us find out about us. A lot of times, people might not have heard of Friendly Center, but if they need us, they've heard about us.
Right. The food distribution, how is that done?
That is, we work with Second Harvest Food Bank. It comes in the morning. Palates are dropped off. The food is distributed. It's cleaned up. It's done.
And it's all, is this walk, 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 walk up?
Yes. 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 We don't do drive-through.
So any, but I mean, do residents who are, you're serving this food, do they have to be registered with you already? Are they part of your program? Or anybody can walk up with us?
We do register everybody. So, I mean, they, they are registered. That's why I can report back to you how many Fullerton people are accessing the service.
Right. And then as, as far as, this is a, a center that was used by the community. It's one of the nicer buildings or satellite community centers that we have. And a lot of funding went into it to, to, to provide access to our community to rent these facilities. And I know it was somewhat of a popular place. Would, would you still be able to provide access for residents who may want to rent this facility?
Unfortunately, we're not in the rental business and a lot of our information that we keep on site would be confidential, record-keeping and such. And as I said, we're just not in the rental business. So that really would, would not work out for us, nor do I have the capacity or the funding to have the kind of staff that could manage a completely different program.
Last, yeah, because, you know, my worry is that we're providing some services to some residents of Fullerton. We don't know exactly how many, but we're also taking away an amenity from the same neighborhood.
Well, I would feel that the value we bring to the neighborhood, to us, that outweighs their ability to rent the facility. That's just my opinion. When a family is in need, they're not going to be renting a facility. They're going to be coming to get services for their family. They're going to be looking for a job or they're going to, you know, need mental health services. There, there are things that the family needs to stabilize. And I realize that that is how the facility has been used. But that is a completely different arm and does not go along with our mission at all, or our 501(c)(3).
Yeah. The, the, the last question I have for you is that in the, in the case that you, you are awarded this, this lease tonight, how would you work with other community centers or nonprofits providing very similar services? We have the Center for Healthy Neighborhoods and then Solidarity within not even a half a mile radius, providing somewhat similar, although I think there's some differences.
The difference is that we're a little more comprehensive. I mean, a lot of agencies touch upon certain things that we do. But we're kind of the, a, a larger picture of what the family needs. So that's why sometimes when I get into the details of this program and that program, it, people glaze over in their eyes because there's a lot of different programs that we offer. And as I said, we, we tailor them to the neighborhood. So when people come to us and need things, I, I'm, I don't know how the other organizations work. I'm familiar with them. But I do know that as a family resource center, there is. not one, the County of Orange, we've been partnering with the County of Orange for over 20 years with their county grant program. And they, the families and communities together, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that or not, it's approved by the County Board of Supervisors. But anyway, they, there is not another Family Resource Center between La Habra and the City of Orange that they consider a Family Resource Center.
Okay. Thank you very much for answering my questions.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anything further from council?
Yes.
Councilmember Silva.
Sorry about that.
No, no worries. And it's great that you're bringing some of these services or all your services to Fullerton. So when you provide these services, are you going to need to hire, I guess, personnel to provide these?
Yes, we are. I'd like to introduce to you, not to cut you off, I apologize, but I have with me Jessica Ruelas, who is our Director of Programs, and she would be the one spearheading, spearheading the opening of the site.
Yes. And the reason I ask that is I'd like to see if we would focus on hiring Fullerton residents for your, you know, your center.
Yes, just help us. You know, we, we will post everywhere for jobs. We even, you know, we partnered with Cal State Fullerton for their work-study students even, so, yeah.
No, I think that would be important because when the city traditionally runs a community center, we've got all these hires that we hire locally for seasonal, if you will. So if possible, I'd like to see, you know, you guys, your center, hire locally and keep the, and it's a way to keep the families involved further by hiring one of their kids to help or one of the parents maybe.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah.
Yes. I agree completely.
All right, very good. So that's one. And the second, I did have a similar concern about the rentals as Councilmember Zara, and I know you're not in the business of that, it didn't seem like it, but is there a way to explore how maybe we can set aside two weekends a month and allow the city to rent out those spaces to provide that service to the community? Don't know if it's possible. I know that, you know, based on your 501(c)(3), it would have to make some changes, but I'd like for us to explore that because Councilmember Zara is right, there has been a lot of quinceañeras, weddings, birthday parties there, and I hate to see them be gone. And I know we've had COVID the last two years, so they weren't there anyway. But I'd like to see if we can explore that, you know, offering it twice, two weekends a month to the city where we have a little bit of experience in rentals and managing. So, you know, maybe have a conversation on that and if it, you know, see what comes up. So that's the second. And then the third one is, one of the reasons that I've been advocating, well, a lot of reasons, but one of the things I would like to see, and I don't know, and I've been trying to do this, but it just run out of time and run out of effort, along with, you mentioned about stopping generational poverty. And it's great that we're educating the students, but one of the things I'd like to see is that we can provide Spanish literacy.
Yes.
For some of the parents who are not literate in their own language. And you talk about, you know, moving out of poverty, literacy is that part. So have you done that in your other cities?
Yes, we have.
Awesome.
In fact, yes, we're starting it back up again in Orange soon. So we've done it for many, many years in Orange and then during COVID, everything fell apart.
Right.
Yes, that's very important to us. And in fact, our community in Orange is, you know, asking us for it back, so.
That's great.
We've got someone identified.
I've had many conversations, but it never went nowhere, but I know that the community colleges was ready to help, providing the teachers and maybe facilities. I know the school district was ready to help, providing a classroom somewhere. So that would be great if we can do that part. And that'll be the same question I'll have for the OC United centers, that to bring those same resources, the hiring of local kids, and I know you guys are all from there, but that Spanish literacy, I've talked to Gabby, where is Gabby at?
Right here.
Oh, I didn't recognize her, my goodness. And we've talked about this and I think we need that and I think the, Dr. Jones there at the Richmond Community Center, they're looking into that too. But anyway, those are the questions I have and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I don't want to move. Okay.
Thank you. All right, Director Loya, you want to finish up your presentation, please?
Well, that was the end of my presentation, unless you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Very good, thank you. So we'll finally take public comments on this item. I know they've been waiting patiently along the aisle there. So if you would be kind enough to come to the mic and give us your thoughts.
Hi, my name is Ashley DeLeone and I'm sharing for all the teenagers who are part of United Teens. We care about the community center because it's basically where we live and it's a second home for us where we see friends and hang out. For us, United Teens is a family in a safe place where we can live life lessons and grow to be more mature, hoping our true selves. At United Teens, we've learned to set boundaries in our relationships throughout safe words, speaking up for ourselves, and treating each other with respect. We've learned to know our worth and that we deserve to be treated right. Thank you.
Please.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Monica Capistrán. Soy líder comunitaria de Voces Unidas en Valencia Park. Somos un grupo de mamás que nos reunimos una vez a las hermanas.
Uh, she says she's leader of qué?
Comunitaria.
She's a community leader at United Voices. It's a group of moms who reunite once, once a week to plan.
Where is she again? En español?
Sí.
Para abogar por unas mejores condiciones de vida y oportunidad para nuestros hijos. Quiero agradecer a la comunidad por poder usar el Centro Comunitario de Gilbert y ser empoderada en ese lugar. Gracias.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Gabby García. I have been living in the neighborhood for 20 years and I want to thank you, all of you, for your support in attending our events on OC United. And behalf of our community, I want to say thank you for that. And I want to thank the organization I work, OC United, Fullerton Police Department for the support, CBI Community Building Initiative for San Jose Providence. I started working at OC United almost seven years ago and we saw the need we have for a safer space in the community where we can empower residents and from all ages, and here we are. That dream is coming true. Let me know what is happening at the Gilbert Community Center. OC, OC United equip us to provide domestic abuse support group, English and Spanish. We have 25 participants from Woodcrest Community and Valencia Park Community every Thursday, every week. We have one-on-one interventions where we give resources to our participants and we are by their side in the most difficult times in their lives. We have the training coming, coming up that will empower our participants. One of them is, is going to help them to help a better self-esteem and see the value they have in them. The other one is trust-based relation and intervention. I want to mention that OC United already equipped two residents from Valencia Park to became trainings practitioners in that training. In this training, connecting happens before corrections. Parent will learn that behavior is a language of the child. They will learn strategies to improve their relationship in their family and with any human being. Our ready club is coming soon. Our children, they will be there once a week and it's going to be a mini library. They are going to be able to check out books. Spanish and English classes are coming to the community center soon. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to serve the community and the Gilbert Community Center. Our families are grateful to have a place that feels like home. We treat each person that enters the community center with respect and we accept them in the way they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gamble.
Counsel, Curtis Gamble, activist for the homeless. I'd just like to say that I enjoyed everybody's speaking, the young people. It's always great to hear from the young people. And I would like to say I approve of these two organizations. I think they would do good in the, in the community. Because after all, they were close for a while and actually, we didn't probably know when they were going to open up again based upon our budget, the city's budget. So I think it's great that these two organizations, OC United and the Friendly Center, have decided to come in and participate. Because in reality, it's going to be a long time before we are able to afford to do what we used to do. So I think we should definitely take advantage of it. The young people need this type of opportunity. They've been stuck in a house for the last couple of years, so this is just something that we really don't have time to debate on. We need any opportunity because they already in the community anyway, they already are doing things. So to have organized organizations in there assisting them would be great. And again, I'd just like to say that this is a great opportunity and I think that we should take advantage of it and thank everybody for wanting to participate.
Thank you. With no further comments, we will seek comments in Zoom.
We have one hand raised in Zoom and his caller with number ending 5223. You should be able to unmute.
Hello, Lucinda, this is Jane. Are you able to hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great, thanks so much. Yeah, first of all, I want to say thank you to both Councilmember Zara and Councilmember Silva for asking one of my two questions and that I feel is important as well. I support their request for access for the community to be able to rent the facilities as well. And Lucinda, you're well aware of the need for the city to be able to access community facilities. For example, when we were, the city was going through the redistricting process, there weren't facilities available in communities where we really needed to have walkable meetings to get people to participate. So if it's possible, the council could also please ask to alter those agreements to not only allow the community to be able to rent the facilities, but the, for the city to be able to access those facilities as well to host community meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other callers on Zoom?
No more callers.
We'll bring this item back to council. I'll seek a motion or further discussion on the matter.
I'll move the item. Mr. Mayor, if I may, these, I believe these two can be moved separately. They were.
I guess they can.
So.
Do we need to move them separately? You do either way. Okay. My motion stands.
Very well.
I'll second that motion.
If I may, make a substitute motion to move the OC United, the Gilbert, for the Gilbert Center first.
Sure, I'll second that as well. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Okay, the substitute motion for OC United, Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Whitaker.
Aye.
Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
That leaves the Maple Neighborhood Center. Councilman Zara, you probably have some thoughts, sir.
Yeah, I do, and I'm, I'm still very much concerned about community access only because this particular building, there was a lot of investment in it that was made specifically to have the community access this rentals and for family events and so on. I remember before COVID, there were a lot of people who were renting this, a lot of locals who were renting this, Bible studies, book clubs, things like that, that now the community, and I know we want to serve our most disadvantaged communities, but I believe there's, there needs to be a balance as well and we need to make sure that everybody also has access to this because now we're blocking access from everyone in this, in the south part. And in the south part of town, this is really the only satellite building from the community center that can be rented. And I know the others are sort of like these trailer types. I know the one in Chaplin Park is extremely small and not suitable for any event of some sort. So I'm just very much concerned about that, that we are blocking access. The other concern obviously is we don't really have any tangible numbers yet to show the, the number of residents in our community that we obviously as a city are subsidizing this, this, this center, this lease, but we have no, no tangible. So I'm, I'd like this to be maybe if possible, either to come back with another round of discussions with our staff as far as how we can work together and make it work where there's some access to the community. I think maybe that, I prefer that rather than making a decision now.
So you would prefer to continue the item. Does council concur?
I would agree. I just want to see if they can, something be worked out where we provide some access to the community in general. And I understand, you know, the Friendly Centers will have the need to provide their services up to a certain hour or, I mean, I don't know, but I would like to see if they can work something out where they can come back and say, well, the city can use it these number of days and not these number of days. And I'd also like to see that, and I think if the Friendly Center works with solidarity because they're providing a lot of the after-school tutoring, that might minimize the need to have the center available or to need the center for longer periods of time. And solidarity is literally right across the street from the Maple Community Center and they are providing a lot of after-school tutoring, which you will be offering as well. And, but, I mean, I wouldn't disagree if we could bring it back with some options to that, to that respect.
Yeah, because, Mr. Mayor, if I may again, because I, I don't want to close the door on this yet. I really.
I understand.
I just want to make sure that we are vetting this.
You just want to get this right.
Yeah.
So if, if the remainder of council agrees, we'll go ahead and.
I see no harm in taking a little more time.
All right, very well. So we'll continue this item and please, Director Loya, if you can arrange something with the Friendly Center, let's, let's come to terms and bring this back. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That said, we'll move on to the final item for this evening. Again, I reiterate for those who have not tuned in earlier, that item number 15 has been continued. So the next item is Fullerton and Brea Fire Command Staff Shared Agreement Proposed Termination. City Manager, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. City of Brea submitted a letter dated March 24th notifying the City of Fullerton of their intent to terminate the shared command staff agreement effective June 30th of this year. The termination for convenience clause outlines that either party may terminate the agreement by providing not less than six months' notice. This is less than six months' notice, so you do need to concur with this. Your agenda report outlines the history of the shared command agreement and discusses some of the City of Brea study that went into this decision to terminate. In light of this, Fullerton can have command staff in place to oversee the management of the fire department by June 30th, so this is doable from our perspective. The plan will require the addition of a fire chief being hired by the City of Fullerton, but no other immediate additions are necessary. Until Fullerton decides to either maintain our own fire department here or contract with OCFA, two deputy chiefs and one division chief will cover the daily battalion chief openings to provide consistent oversight and management of the crews at the city's six fire stations. If the council were to choose to maintain the fire department, then staff will have costing and explanation as to what would be necessary as a part of the ongoing budget impact and we would bring that back to you as a part of your budget study session that will be coming up later this month. The mutual aid agreements, dispatch and communications and required technology have remained separated between the two cities and do not require any modifications. Staff has recommended that the council authorize me to terminate the agreement effective June 30th and direct staff to proceed with the re-establishing the Fullerton Fire Department Command Staff in preparation for the 2022 and 23 budget. Be happy to answer any questions you have and Chief Lozier is here as well if you have further questions.
Thank you for that, sir. If we can bring this back to council really fast for any questions, if we have any concerns or questions, please address them now. Yes, sir.
I do.
Mr. Mayor Protam.
I'm wondering, we just agreed not to abide by the terms of a six-month notice?
You have not agreed to that, but you can do that. We don't see a problem with going ahead and making this shift, protract that out.
I just find it unusual that normally those types of requirements are binding, so to make it optional is a little bit out of the norm, I think. to make it optional is a little bit out of the norm, I think. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions for the city manager on this matter? If not, we will hear public comments on this item. Any members of the public in the chambers that wish to comment, please feel free to do so. Seeing none, we'll go to Zoom.
No callers in Zoom.
No callers on Zoom. We'll bring this back to council. I'll entertain further discussion on the item or a motion.
I'll move the item.
Well.
You know, I'd just say I see no reason to move it either. I mean, it was, obviously, it was, you know, timeframe inserted in the contract for a reason, reason you enter into contracts or to abide by them. And so, you know, the fact that it's, you know, not just a term that's outlined, but it's, I think, a courtesy with respect to the shared agreement over the course of, that's been in place for some time. I think six months is, you know, not unreasonable. And so, while we could rush to mobilize and get something in effect or established, you know, certainly the additional time would only benefit us. So I'm not in favor of it, won't support it this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from any council members?
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may
Councilman Silva, please.
So this timeframe, what are the consequences if we move forward for the six months, or if we wait six months? What happens?
You would just continue in your current format for another six months, and then you'd have a new date to work off of.
And when we say continue of our current format, that would be with the City of Brea?
It would be a shared command staff.
And they would have to agree because we're going to hold them to the six months?
Yeah. You can do that. Within your prerogative, we do that.
If you require six months' notice, they've asked for a shortened time period. If you don't do that, it would be six months.
They've cut the notice in half, basically.
Right. And then how does that impact us in our budget? Because we've got a budget in three months, right? Two months? How would that impact?
Yeah, it's going to save you some funding there for a few months. That way, because you're going to have to incur some additional cost putting your command staff in place.
So it'll save us some funding if we wait six months?
It'll save you some amount. I haven't calculated that figure.
Yeah, okay. All right, okay. Then, yeah, then I think I would like to take the time then and take the six months before we move it. Because we're going to have to move, make the change anyway, right?
Yeah.
If I can, if I can address it as well. We are at a point with my staff, my command staff, that I have two members that are pulling double duty essentially. And I have really no way to expand upon that or to give them any relief at this point due to the evaluation that's going on between our current fire department and OCFA, and then Brea's desire to have their own standalone fire department and command staff. So really, it comes down to the staff that's holding this together right now. And I understand there is financial benefits to elongating this. But really, the individuals that are holding it together right now are getting to a tight spot. And we're struggling to be able to fill any of those positions.
Okay. So you're saying if we continue it, those work, those personnel will incur those extra duties with Brea? And if we do the three months, they would come back to us and not have to, I guess, put in the extra duty, you know, or stretch them out?
Correct. They would still, they would still hold that duty, but just for one city. And that would be until we have some decision made, one way or the other, with what we're going to do here with the fire services in the City of Fullerton.
Okay. Well, that does, I mean, I know that the fire department is stretched thin. And I did not realize that. So I think that, to me, I guess, would warrant us moving sooner than later. I mean, I'm going to flip here. And because, no, I do understand the
Well, we haven't voted yet, sir. So you're all right.
But I was leaning the other way just to give us more time. But hearing from the chief, and if it's going to impact us, then I would, I guess, cut our losses sooner than later.
All right, very well. So this agreement originally was an accord between two neighboring cities that had some merit and value and a holistic approach to all of this that I think at this point has run its course. I'm not a fan of keeping the Band-Aid on when you should pull it. So at this point, I would support moving us forward, making sure that our own fire command, our own fire department has stability and command staff in place. This is not something that we instigated. This is the City of Brea that initiated this. So we are just taking our own selfish values, I suppose, in place. But, you know, we don't serve the City of Brea residents. We serve the City of Fullerton. So I welcome a second to Councilman Zara's original motion. Councilman Silva, if you supply one.
I'll second.
Very well.
We can public comment.
We did. Did we not? I thought we did. All right, very well. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dunlap.
No.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Brotem Whittaker.
No.
And Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes three to two.
Mayor Jung, if I could make a brief announcement tonight.
Please.
As we've kind of gone through a season here of interim folks on board, we do have a new city manager coming. But we also have a new human resources director who officially started today, and that's Eddie Manfro, who has chosen to come out of retirement and come back to serve the City of Fullerton as the director of human resources. And I just wanted to acknowledge Eddie. Eddie comes with nearly 30 years of experience, over 20 years of HR experience. And so he comes with extensive experience, including a number of years as a city manager with the City of Westminster. So he comes here with great credentials, and he's been serving here actually for quite some time on an interim basis. So he's been very effective in keeping the department going. But I just wanted to acknowledge Eddie tonight. And it's just another piece to the puzzle as we're putting the organization together here with your new city manager coming on board. Just another real positive note as we move forward.
Indeed. We welcome, as a council, Director Manfro, and thank him for his interim service. And now he's in an official capacity as we work diligently to move Fullerton forward. Anything else from council?
Item three.
You have three items, sir?
Consent calendar.
Oh, excuse me.
Pulsed item three.
Consent calendar. Right. Councilman Zara pulled item number three. So Director, please, whatever is best. Go ahead, sir.
So I can make it brief. The questions I had were about affordable housing in our community, and have we met those numbers? And what is the city planning as far as meeting those numbers in the future? So you can limit it to that question. Thank you.
Yeah, I, excuse me, I think the best item to look on is page three, which is Table two, which gives you a summary of how the city did with its regional housing needs assessment over the last planning period, which was cycle five. Within that, you can see that the city did not meet all of its housing obligations or what it tried to meet when that housing element was adopted eight years ago, or a little over eight years ago. We came up short about 624 units. The city ended up doing sixteen, over 1,600 units, where our arena was over 1,800 units. So we were shy. So we did not meet our affordable housing, what we tried to do when this was established in 2013. Importantly, the city is not mandated to construct these units. The city is, every housing element, when you're doing a housing element, the city has to show that it has enough sites or availability and programs to try and hit that number. I think we did a pretty good effort, but we did not meet it for this last housing cycle. We have a new housing cycle that we're working on. So we're going to have a new program that's going to be coming to you, a new housing element that's going to be coming to you with a variety of programs. And of course, as you know, or you've heard, our arena is substantially higher, over a little over 13,000 units this time. And so we have programs within that housing element that we're going to be proposing to show you how we can meet that obligation.
When, I know we've been waiting for our housing element, the new housing element to come back. What can we do as a city to make sure that there's ample participation from the community and awareness that this is something that they can come and participate in?
We've been doing that to some degree with the housing element preparation that we've been doing. We've been to the Planning Commission with a workshop. We've been, we have the element out. It's on the city's website that they can review. But of course, we do have public hearings that are going to be coming up, both before the Planning Commission and City Council, and getting the housing element out further. The only thing that we've done thus far is we have submitted a draft to HCDs that we could get something in quick, so they get their first round of comments, which we've received. We're currently revising that element to address some of their comments, and then we're going to open it up to the public and get it out to the Planning Commission and City Council's attention. So there will be opportunity yet for the public to participate in this process.
All right. I appreciate. Thank you.
Anything further? All right, we'll seek a motion on this item to move it forward.
I'll move the item.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Very well. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Brotem Whittaker.
Aye.
Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
All right. If there's nothing further from
Yes, what were they, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I'd like to see, when we come back and discuss our budget session studies, could we include an item to see if we could fund the water main on Orange Thorpe so we can get that street done completely and not have to come back and dig it up a year from now?
We can look at that. We did submit that as one of the federal earmark requests that we have given to our legislators. But that's, yeah, it's a lot of money. I think it's a 12-inch line, so it's a fairly big line, so it's going to be quite costly.
Right.
But we can take a look at that and see
Yeah, that'd be great.
What options there are, you know, whether there's an inter fund that we can do alone or something like that. We can look at various options.
Yeah, would you please? Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. That said, we will bring this meeting to a close. Next meeting is on April 19th. Same bad time, same bad channel, folks. Good night.